I'd like to call the March Common Council Meeting to order. Please rise for the federal agents.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic of our citizens. We are the people of the God, the individual, with every intention for all.
Would the court please conduct a roll call?
Heidi?
Here.
Clinker?
Here.
Nargie?
Here.
Reynolds?
Here.
Campbell?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Williamson?
Here.
Downing?
Here.
Wallace Meyer?
Here.
Present.
Thank you. The first item of business is the approval of the February minutes. What is the pleasure of the council? Mr. Campbell?
The exception has been communicated.
Mr. Brown?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the February minutes.
Are there any comments or questions from members of the council? All those in favor of approval of the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The minutes are approved. Presentation of the civil claims?
There are none.
Presentations of petitions and communications?
There are none.
Reports of city offices on file in the city clerk's office?
Clerk's office, monthly January. Food Finders, monthly January. Water Work Department, monthly January. Water Pollution Control Department, monthly January. And a 2014 annual report.
And as a reminder to the public, those reports are available free or perusal during regular business hours at the clerk's office. We have no ordinances for second reading this evening, so we move on to ordinances for first reading, the first one being ordinance 2015-03.
An ordinance amending Chapter 1.02 of the Lafayette Municipal Code pertaining to ordinance violation bureau.
Mr. Clinker?
I move to hear and approve ordinance 2015-03 on first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Heidi.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded to hear ordinance 2015-03. Mr. Tausnick, would you like to speak to this ordinance?
Yes, I will. The City of Lafayette, as y'all know, assumed parking enforcement within the City of Lafayette and created a parking operations department as part of the 2015 budget that you approved. And the parking operations, we currently have the operation supervisor that you see driving around in that unique little car. And there's also, I think, at least one parking enforcement technician, and maybe several. They have been able to take up enforcement in the downtown area easily, taking over what Dennison did and more. And so the city's now in a position to allow them to expand into other areas. And it turns out that since they were... We also have an ordinance violations bureau with an ordinance violations ordinance. And it specifically rests those individuals that are authorized to give out ordinance violation tickets. Since this is a new department, new employees, we need to amend the ordinance violations bureau ordinance to add the operation supervisor and parking enforcement technicians that work within that parking enforcement department so that they can issue ordinance violations, our typical tickets, as they particularly expand their operation beyond the downtown area. And that's the purpose of this ordinance, to amend the ordinance to allow these individuals to be added.
Thank you. Mr. Tausnick, any comments or questions from members of the council?
I guess I have a question. If a person is issued one of these citations or ordinance violation, what is there... What happens to them now?
Well, they're... Okay, if they get a... It depends on what ordinance violation it is. If it's a parking ticket, they have an opportunity to appeal it if there's a claim. The supervisor of the operations department usually is able to explain to the... Based on what he's told me, he's been able to explain to the individual why they got the ticket. And most of them understand there are a few times where they've appealed to him and he's said, "Yeah, I understand," and the ticket's dismissed. Otherwise, they pay him. And there... I mean, most of the tickets under the parking part of the code are in the neighborhood of $20 for first violations. The ordinance violations bureau has other violations that they could cite people for, and those are, in essence, $50 tickets. They're all subject to appeal and review.
So parking on a snow or local route would be in what class, a 20 or a 30?
Generally, that'd be a $20 ticket. I'm not sure... It depends on the enforcement.
I have to declare a snow emergency. It's not just automatically against the ordinance to park in a snow emergency route. That's only if I declare that there is a snow emergency, and then the vehicles have to be removed from those snow emergency routes by ordinance.
And what... What do you determine as a snow emergency?
Something that's a really significant event. We did it one time last year during the winter, and maybe one other time in the whole 12 years that I've been here. We don't... We don't take that designation lightly. And fortunately, without declaring an emergency and just getting information out, we actually get really good compliance from people along those routes, just getting those cars moved. So I think we've managed that well with the police department. We've only had to tell a very small number of people over the years and still been able to do it. So we look at cold, how much snow we're going to get, wind, different things like that. It's just kind of a judgment call, like whether you close school or not.
In other words, like we called off the city council meeting?
Yeah. We've never done that, have we?
Yeah, we've...
No, no, no. Some people wanted to ask you.
And I don't think I...
Let us do it.
I don't think I did that, right? We've never closed City Hall. We've never closed City Hall. That's all.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the council? Any comments or questions from members of the public regarding ordinance 2015-03? Okay, seeing none, would the court please conduct a roll call vote?
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordnance pass is eight to zero.
Thank you. Moving on to ordinance 2015-04.
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance to Piquet County, Indiana, to rezone certain real estate from NB to R3, 36.29 acres on the northeast side of Frontage Road, Domino Development.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes, this is right before area plan. It was a 12 yes.
I'm sorry, excuse me. Could you make a motion to bring it to the floor?
I make a motion to hear and approve ordinance 2015-04.
Thank you. Mrs. Nargie?
I second it.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to hear ordinance 2015-04. Mr. Reynolds, did you want to address this?
Yeah, it was right before area plan. It was a 12-0 vote in favor of.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Teeter is passing out. Appet. Present.
Can approve though?
Yeah, I'm kidding. I'll put one. No, I don't.
Yeah, clerks do that one.
I need one for money. Put it in a folder. I can hear.
Good evening, Dan Teeter, Attorney General, T. M. Schreier, represent the petitioner. Mr. Hennessy is present this evening as the petitioner's representative. He's also one of the principals in this project, and he'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have regarding any of the technical issues on it. We received a favorable staff report. We received a unanimous yes vote from the area plan commission. We had no one to speak in opposition to it at the meeting. We did have one letter that was read from a neighbor. He was concerned about the traffic on the Frontage Road. And I would respond to that question by saying that if the zoning is approved, then we will initiate the subdivision process. When we go through the subdivision process, we're going to have the police, we're going to have the fire, we're going to have the city engineer, as well as the area plan commission present. And they're going to give their input, make changes, technical things that might occur with it. But specifically, they're going to look at the drainage, and they're going to look at the access road as well, or the access to the Frontage Road as well for this project. So those questions that the neighbor have, or you might have regarding those, would all be answered in that subdivision process. We're requesting rezone from NB to R3. This is a 36-acre tract in the R3. Obviously, only residential is permitted. In the NB, we've got retail trade, we've got liquor stores, we've got eating establishments, we've got strip centers. So I submit to you that, in my opinion, residential for this site makes a lot more sense than the current zoning of NB. The handout I've given you shows the site plan. We're proposing 240 luxury apartment units of this site. We're going to have 91 bedrooms, 134 two-bedrooms, 16 three-bedrooms. We'll have 90 attached garages, and we'll have 62 detached garages. We'll also have additional parking besides that. There'll be 15 buildings for the apartments, six attached garages in each unit or each building, and there'll also be a clubhouse as well with it. In addition, in the handout, we show a narrative, and it shows the project, the elevations to it. One of the pictures in front is also in your packet that you can look at. We're going to have brick with siding on the project. It's going to have a complete appliance package. We'll have granite, tannic tops, walk-in closets, sprinklers, nine-foot tall ceilings, so more than you would see in a normal apartment project that we would have in the community, perhaps. Some other amenities will be a clubhouse. The clubhouse will have a tanning booth with it, an exercise room, and a swimming pool as well. We also show in the handout pictures for you, and I passed out additional pictures because I think this is pretty important. The project is totally surrounded by heavy woods and ravines. We will not... Our intent is not to touch those wood areas or those ravines, so there'll be a very nice buffer yard surrounding the project. The nearest house to the west is about 360 feet from the project. The nearest house to the east is over 500 feet. The pictures that you see in the draw... On the handout shows you what it looks like in the wintertime, and you can barely see one house in one of the pictures. I submit to you again, if you look at it in the summertime with the leaves on, no one's going to be able to see the houses. And at the reverse of that, the houses are not going to be able to see the apartment. So I think this is an excellent place to put all this. We're going to have a classy buffer yard, 20 foot wide. It will be bordering the NB and the HB to the south, so there'll be additional buffering there. We need all the lot coverage, green space, parking, and setback requirements. I know Mr. Heidi was concerned about parking, so we've got 152 garages plus 260 outside spaces. So we more than need the ordinances as far as parking goes as well. We will have no variance requests for this. The rents are going to be in the $800 to $1,400 range. When this project is complete, the cost will be approximately $25 million. So I think this is a nice addition to the city in that regard. Mr. Hennessy and I also spoke with the mayor three or four months ago, and from my understanding, the mayor has no objection to this request. He's here, and he can obviously speak for himself regarding to that. I think another question the caucus was brought up, why aren't we filing a commitment? I prepared a commitment. I sent the commitment to the attorney for the area plan, Jay Seager. Mr. Seager informed me that commitments for market rate apartments are not appropriate with the change in the commitment rules. They don't fit in that. You can't do those anymore. So we're trying to do the next best thing in that he has a binding offer to purchase this property, subject to this rezoning. So we will add a covenant that will run with the land from the seller to the buyer, saying that we'll have market rate apartments in this, and we'll share that with Mr. Tausnick when we get to that point. So with all that, be happy to answer any questions. I would respectfully request your approval. Thank you very much.
I have one question. On the Frontage Road, that's just a two lane right now, isn't it?
I guess it is.
And you're going to have how many cars coming in and out of there?
There'll be 200 and some units in there, so perhaps two trips per unit a day, perhaps, in there.
So when you go to the subdivision part, there's a possibility of widening that road, or is there none, no possibility?
I would think that's something that they're going to talk about in the subdivision process. I don't know if anyone's here to be... Mr. Foley, seriously, maybe he can add to that, but I'm assuming that at the very least, we're going to have to have D cell, X cell, what else is going to be needed? I can't answer that at this point. But that will be considered in that subdivision process.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have.
All right, good. I just wondered if you have the most recent numbers. A lot of the time you have when you're talking about R3, the current occupancy rate for apartments in Lafayette. I know these are kind of different. I'm scared, but...
I think these are very different, but I don't have that off the top of my head. But I did look at... Shook had a handout that they gave us for last year, and I believe in that it showed that they're in the 90 percent.
99.
The west side is even higher than that, but I don't want to commit and say it's 98, but I think it's... Occupancy is extremely low, and a lot more people wanting to do apartments, and you're seeing a lot of houses being rented because part of the problem that we're having is that the first-time home buyer doesn't have a place. They can't afford the regular R1 of 200-plus thousand-dollar homes. They want a $160,000 home, and it's very difficult to find that R1B area either in Lafayette or in the county or in West Lafayette. So that's another reason, I think, plus the fine job that cities have been doing with adding GE and all the other people coming in. As Mr. Hennessy was talking about, they said Lafayette, when you're down in Indianapolis, it's like it's gold up here. Everybody wants to come to Lafayette, which is great. Mr. Campbell?
For lack of a better word, I'm sure you looked into a curb cut on 26. What's the requirement there?
There's no curb cut on 26. We're coming off Frontage Road.
We can buy and have a route in and out of this addition?
Directly to 26?
Yeah.
I don't know that that's possible, but I...
I don't know either.
Yeah, I don't think that is possible because there's too many...
Highly, 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 in my mind.
There's too many other businesses there as well. I don't see that as possible. It'd be a great thing if you could, but I just don't think that's going to happen. Any other questions? Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Teeter. Any other comments or questions from members of the council? Comments or questions from members of the public regarding ordinance 2015-04? Seeing none, would the court please conduct a roll call vote?
The word of the title, "Overture," what? Pick it out here. Out there.
Making obituaries about where you live.
Okay, thank you. All ready? Yes. Mr. Heidi?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordnance pass is eight to zero. Moving on to ordinance 2015-05.
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance to Piquet County, Indiana, to rezone certain real estate from R2 to NBU, 1204 Greenbush Street, Food Finders, Food Bank, petitioner. Mr. Brown?
Madam President, I move that we hear and approve ordinance 2015-05.
Thank you. Mrs. Williams, second. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to hear ordinance 2015-05. Mr. Brown, did you want to speak about this?
Oh, yes, this is another one of the... This is a rezone that's taking place right around the corner from that house, and I'm so happy to have it happen. We heard about it, of course, with the area plan commission meeting. It was the unanimous vote of favor, and no one's spoken abuse. I don't know why, because the particular property that's involved in this has fallen in and out of use over time, so it's a church building. And from what I understand, Food Finder is going to find a perfect use for it, and I'm ever so happy to support it.
Excellent. Mr. Mayor, did you want to add anything?
I think Perry, the flat element, could try it.
Any comments or questions from members of the council? Mr. Riley, did you want to add something?
I could add just a few comments. We are under contract to purchase this property right now. There's a planned closing for the end of this month. Once we close, Food Finder anticipates investing about $1.1 million into this building to renovate it. It's going to house 18 offices for Food Finder staff. We'll have classroom space for food education programs, and we'll also have a food pantry that opens up on the 12th street. So we think it's a very positive development for this area, and we request your approval. Happy to answer any questions if you have.
Questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Riley. Any questions or comments from members of the public regarding this ordinance? Any further questions or comments from council? All right, thank you. Would the court please conduct a roll call vote?
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordnance pass is eight to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to ordinance 2015-06.
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance to Piquet County, Indiana, to rezone certain real estate from NB to R1U, 1918 South Street, Ryan Parker, petitioner.
Mr. Downing?
I move to hear and approve ordinance 2015-06.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell?
Second.
Excellent. We... Mr. Riley left, but he was going to speak about this. As I understand, this is a house that was grandfathered in... Not grandfathered in, I guess I should say, was zoned this way when the neighborhood existed, correct, Mr. Tausnick?
You want me to try to go?
Are you the petition?
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Come on up.
You're in the...
I have the home listed, so the only reason why I'm doing this, and the homeowner's out of town.
Okay.
But we got the property sold a couple of months ago, where we had an accepted offer on it. The appraiser went out there and found out that the current zoning makes it nonconforming, so the lender had an issue with that, and they wouldn't do the loan. So we now have another offer on it, set to close April 6th, but it's contingent on this zoning, getting switched back so that it can be... It will be rebuilt if something ever happens to the property.
And you're requesting rezone from NB to R1?
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Clinker?
I had a question for Ryan. What took it to NB? Do you know what was the property used for?
I talked to John Burns. It's always been a residential property, and he said the way the zoning was until like 1998, it could be NB or another type of zoning where it could still be residential. And it just switched over to that. Even the seller didn't even know that it had happened. So...
There's no business there at any time that made it NB?
Yeah, there's never been a business there. It's been a residential home for, I think, over 100 years.
Mr. Clinker, I think there've been a number of areas that when they did the zoning initially, they just designated certain areas as neighborhood business, even though it had never been a neighborhood business. And so you have nonconforming uses pop up from time to time that have always been nonconforming. And so some of them, like this one here, when they get to sell them, banks are now requiring these zoning letters, and if it's not zoned for the current use, they won't the money. So that's the reason for this rezone.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions from council? Any comments or questions from the public regarding ordinance 2015-06? Okay, seeing none, would the court please conduct a roll call vote?
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordnance pass is eight to zero.
Thank you. This concludes ordinances for this evening. Moving on to resolutions. We have resolution 2015-03.
A resolution approving the grant of real estate by the Lafayette Redevelopment Commission to the Lafayette Urban Enterprise Association.
It's the pleasure of the council. Mr. Brown?
Madam President, I move to hear and approve resolution 2015-03.
Mrs. Williams, second. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to hear resolution 2015-03. Mr. Carson?
Good evening, Dennis Carson, Director of Economic Development of the City of Lafayette and also Director of the Lafayette Urban Enterprise Association. First, I'm going to give you this handout. So Lafayette Urban Enterprise Association is requesting approval of this transfer of property from 104 North Sixth Street to give to the Urban Enterprise Association. Give you a little background on the Lafayette Urban Enterprise Association. We oversee a state-designated enterprise zone that was approved through an application by the City of Lafayette. Our board is managed by... It's a 12-member board appointed by the mayor and the city council. The Urban Enterprise Association itself is a 501(c)(3) community development corporation dedicated to revitalization of the Lafayette Zone by facilitating business, capital investment in job creation, as well as neighborhood development. The Urban Enterprise Association does a variety of things for community and economic development, but its interest in this property is similar to what Habitat Humanity does for affordable housing. The Urban Enterprise Association is one need to do for commercial or institutional property to promote capital investment, job creation. Give you an example, a few years back, the Urban Enterprise Association partnered with City Bus and the City of Lafayette to acquire a property on Third Street for the City Bus Transfer Station. As you know, now we have a very nice transfer station there for buses and pedestrian use. State statute allows redevelopment commissions to use a transfer property such as this to community and development organizations like Habitat, the Urban Enterprise Association for its mutual mission and goals. The property was given to the redevelopment commission several years ago by the UAW, and the commission has been able to find a way to develop and reuse the property within its legal requirements. About a year ago or so, I was approached by James and Molly Enos. They're a couple who lives in San Diego, California. They're architects, and they had an interest in this property, but they're looking for a not-for-profit partner. James is from the Lafayette area, and he would like to give back to the community by doing a social enterprise project here in our community. And what they're proposing to do is to do an artist co-op in the facility, where they have four to six residential units and a small retail gallery. They have some interest from an entrepreneur that's actually in California, does some work with Lafayette, who'd like to move back here, and also some interest from some other local people in the property. So in order to do this, they need a not-for-profit partner, and that's where the Urban Enterprise Association comes in. We will enter into agreement with the Enos with certain stipulations and make sure they do the project as intended. They have been very transparent about their project and their intentions with me, and they also have the financial capacity, and they have shared that with me as well. They do have a... They are approved for a loan to do the... By a commercial lender to do the project. So I believe they have the expertise and the capacity to do the project. The building, as you can see by the handout that you got, is in very severe disrepair and has been a blight on the neighborhood for some time. Again, they want to revitalize this project, want to do, restore the historic facade on the front, and then make a few additions to the project and then put it back into use. So again, we're requesting transfer of this property to the Urban Enterprise Association, who can then partner with the Enos in order to place the building back in the tax-paying
You mentioned the tax-paying establishment, but it's all, my question, does it not profit the application, which is?
Yeah, the Urban Enterprise Association, it's the not-for-profit, but the Enos will actually operate this in a for-profit venture.
So, so you will be the managers, the LE, LE, EU, that, like?
We're going to be, we'll have a short-term partnership with them to help them facilitate this project, but then we will get out of it and they will be the sole owners.
What kind of zoning are they going to have for this place? I mean, it's just, the best thing I could see for this to be.
Well, I would agree with you. It's probably, um, it's in our hearing authority list that they didn't have interest in the property.
You, you were gone before they get to hearing authority?
No, no, I'm just saying that it is in severe disrepair, and we haven't been able to find any probably interested in it besides the Enos, then, then my guess would be pretty soon, we'd probably end up on the hearing authority list.
Will you have to come back to us for some sort of zoning for this particular property?
No, we will not have to.
It's likely a business, what do you have to say, they're going to have a shop to sell our property for?
It falls into the category of home occupation, so it would, it would be okay. We wouldn't have to go into retail zoning for it.
Any other questions for Mr. Carson?
Well, looking at these pictures, how much are, how much are they planning on putting into this building? This place is nuts.
Uh, yes, it is. So, they've got estimates on the, to do the mold remediation on it, and then they got estimates to do the construction of the project, so probably between $150,000 to $200,000.
That's going to be enough. I'm talking, I'm all over.
Yeah, the estimate on the mold removal was $25,000.
I guess, I guess, I'm more concerned about the structural integrity of the building.
Yeah, the structural integrity, it's, it's okay, from that standpoint. Again, the mold is a problem, it needs to be remediated, and then some other more cosmetic things that need to be done, obviously.
I don't know where the water's coming from. What's the square footage of this?
It's a one-story building offhand, I'm not sure.
The lot's only 25 foot wide, so the building can't be very, I don't know how long it is, but the, it's a 25-foot lot.
I believe it was originally built as a small grocery store, a neighborhood grocery store.
It's one of those properties that if they can't save it, it's unlikely there'd be any use for that 25-foot lot, because you really couldn't build anything back on it. And what, what's going to happen after, assuming the, there's a change in the law prior to this, the Lafayette Redevelopment Commission has had some lots that they've been able to give to not-for-profits like Habitat, and legislature changed the law that not only does the redevelopment commission have to approve it, which they did last Thursday, but the city council also has to approve any transfer of city property, even to a not-for-profit like Habitat or in this case, Lua. If the council approves that, Mr. Carson has provided me with the information or the requirements that, that we're going to have in a development agreement with, with this purchaser, so that they're required, what we don't want to have is have a project and it not be completed. So, if it's not completed within a two-year time period, it, you know, it's going to revert back to the, to Lua and then ultimately back to the city. And there's going to be certain conditions in that development agreement so that Lua can monitor the project so that it is what the architects have explained to Lua they plan to do with that building.
Any other questions or comments from council?[1705.23]